Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Good morning. Golly, that's a little loud. Good morning, everybody, and thank you for joining us for the September 29th City Council Work Session. This will be a little bit shorter of a meeting or a little bit different of a meeting. We'll have a short consent agenda where we'll do some of the business that needs to be done this week. And then we'll move into a work session which is going to be primarily made up of some updates from staff. And then we'll conclude with a sort of a quarter look back and look forward with the Budget Review Committee under the guidance of Counselor John House. So we're going to start the way we begin all of our meetings, and that is by invoking God's presence. And I'm pleased to welcome Christopher Poirier from River Valley Church. Christopher, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, everyone. My name is Chris Poirier. I'm the Lead Pastor, Church Planner of River Valley Church, a brand-new gospel ministry to the gospel of Jesus Christ, and I'm honored and humbled to be here this morning to be able to seek God for all of us this morning. So just as we begin, let us take a short moment and think of His Word from Romans, Chapter 12, Verse 21. "For do not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil with good." Let us go to the Lord in prayer this morning. Father, we do thank you for this most glorious day that you have provided and you have made. Father, we pray for Columbus, Georgia. We pray for each of these leaders here this morning, for each representative. We pray for the work before them. We pray for our great city. And Father, we pray for healing and protection as we continue to guide ourselves through these challenging times of COVID. Father, just be with us as we do your good works here. For it's in your Son's most glorious name we pray. Amen.
Chris, thank you so much. And I got to say, Chris has been, as most of the pastors in this community, have been actively engaged in looking for innovative ways to continue to support the community. And first, let me say your prayers for this government, the city, the state, and this country are appreciated, but we appreciate your personal involvement and the way that you are trying to actively help move Columbus forward. So thank you very much. If you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get started, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Counselor Garrett. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they are approved. Before we get started, I just have a couple of little updates on COVID, and we'll talk a little bit about the last 48 hours of the census opportunity. But need to recognize the loss of one of the key figures in this community. He is Bob Portisheff. I had the pleasure of serving on City Council with Bob both when he was a counselor and as he was also served as mayor of Columbus. But more than that, Bob was just, Bob was a driving force in everything that benefited people. And I think the thing I remember most about Uncle Bob, as he was affectionately known, is his love of people. Everything he did, from his service to his country, to participating in the legislative side in this city and then moving into the executive side, he always did it with love for people first and foremost. And at this particular point in time in our nation, I can think of no greater initiative than leading with love. Bob taught us all that. We will miss him terribly. Our hearts and our prayers go out to the family. We love them because we love him. And I hope you will all keep them in your prayers and in your thoughts as we move forward through this season of healing. All right. We have on our agenda a quick update on COVID-19. We continue to see the fruits of the labor of Columbus in that the numbers are staying relatively flat. We seem to have avoided any major spikes as a result of Labor Day. We have seen a couple of upticks in some of our numbers. I think that's probably just due to the fact that school's in session, people are moving around a little bit more. But we only had 10 new cases yesterday. Now again, I've said time and again that the new cases are not what we really watch other than just to look at the trends because they are impacted by so many things, whether it's the availability of the testing, whether it's people who are asymptomatic and not going to get tested, because during April and May and into June, we had everybody wanting to get tested. And we're just not seeing that desire to get COVID testing like we did. So the testing's down a little bit. But the other piece of that is, this community by and large, not everybody, but by and large, this community's done an exceptional job at listening to the CDC, the Health Department, and our government in urging them to abide by those guidelines, and they've been doing it. No one action is what has helped us keep our numbers low, but I think a combination of all those things. So the mask mandate, the mask ordinance that this council agreed to put in place is absolutely having an effect. And I would never dare try to tell you it's all because we have a mask ordinance in place. But I will tell you that with that as part of the prescription we're using, the spread of this virus has remained kind of flat. The hospitalization rate, which we do watch, because we know there's a lot of folks that are in the hospitals, non-COVID-related, for non-COVID-related issues, and the more COVID patients that are in those hospitals, the harder it is for them to serve those that have other medical needs. That has stayed in the 30 to 40 range. So we're doing a good job of trying to ease some of the pressure on our hospitals. And one number we do watch, because people ask, when does the mask ordinance come off? We have said from the beginning that our target would be the same target that was put out there by the White House Coronavirus Team and by the Governor's Office, and that is 100 cases per 100,000 residents over a two-week period. So we've stayed, we bounced up just a little, maybe because of Labor Day, but we're still very strong. We're down to about 134, I think, over that 14-day period. So things are moving in the right direction, but we cannot, we cannot forget for one minute that we're still in the midst of a pandemic. So I thank you for what you've done thus far, and I urge you to continue it as we go forward. Next update is on the census, and we had a tremendous event that Fair Count had contacted our city manager about. Actually, had contacted his better half. And between State Representative Carolyn Hughley and Fair Count Committee, we put together an event here at the Civic Center outside that actually was offering free COVID testing, free flu shots, and registration for the census. And when you register for the census, you had an opportunity to register for some pretty neat door prizes that the city manager's office had secured from some of our corporate citizens. And it went great. I know I got my flu shot, still working on the city manager, trying to make him get his. But a lot of other folks, I think, took the opportunity to walk down there and tried to make sure that they stay healthy through this flu season, because that's our concern. One of our concerns, by the way, with the COVID-19 virus is that if the flu season is especially harsh, on top of the dangers that COVID presents, it could be a tough winter. But anyway, we are still, we've edged up, we've gotten it up. And I have to point something else out. While we were there with Fair Count, the city manager had an idea to take one of their enumerators, one of the Fair Count Committee, and took them down to the Metro Transfer Station. I think they actually signed up more folks for census at Metro than they did here at the Civic Center and the ice rink. So it was a great job by the city manager's office and his millennial roundtable in putting all of that together. But we still do have another day, and we've gone over the benefits of participating in the census to the point where I don't think I need to tell you anymore, but I will. I'll tell you that this money that we stand to lose impacts those least served in our community. It impacts people through Medicare, through SNAP, through housing assistance, through just everything, economic development, roads, transportation. And if you think you don't get impacted by those things, you need to remember that if those federal dollars shrink, we still have to provide those services to the citizens that need them. So it's going to impact all of us, some from lack of access to those services, some because we have to continue to try to help pay for them. So I would urge you to hit your email address book and try to tell all your friends, please fill out that census, 2020census.gov, before midnight tomorrow, I believe is what it is. All right. That's all I've got. So I'm going to move on to the consent agenda and turn it over to our city attorney. Mr. Fay?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Morning, everybody. We just have a very short business agenda, one item needs a vote. This is the billings petition at 7290 Blackman Road.
Motion to approve from Mayor Pro Tem is your second. Second from Counselor House. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It passes.
Hey, that has passed. And that's all we have listed on the formal agenda, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. And I'm going to move to our Clerk of Council. She's got a couple of resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, we have a resolution counseling the October 6, 2020 proclamation session.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Woodson. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no.
Next, we have a resolution excusing Counselor Barnes from the September 22nd and today's work session agenda.
Motion to approve from Counselor Woodson. Second from Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Next, a resolution excusing Counselor Davis from the September 22nd.
Motion from Counselor Tucker to approve is second from Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
And the last resolution that we have, Mr. Mayor, is to receive the report of the Director of Finance concerning certain alcoholic beverage licenses that were processed during the month of August.
Motion to approve by Counselor Huff and a second from Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is all the resolutions that we have today.
Thank you, ma'am clerk. All right, we'll move into our work session agenda. Mr. City Manager, Mr. Hughley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning to each of you. Mayor and council, first on my agenda this morning is a check presentation to a local community nonprofit organization from Walmart. Walmart, as we all know, is a good corporate citizen here in Columbus. This morning, we have with us Mr. Glenn Wilkins with Walmart, and I'm going to ask him to come to the podium and bring all of the other Walmart representatives with him. And Mr. Mayor and council, I'm going to ask Ms. Shay Anderson with the Liberty Theater to come forward and bring any board members that she has present with her. And Mayor, you mentioned Fair Count and them coming through, Representative Carolyn Hughley and bringing the COVID flu shots and the census effort to town. Well, Mr. Glenn Wilkins contacted State Representative Carolyn Hughley to talk to her about what is going to happen this morning, so I'm going to ask her to at least come and stand this morning, State Representative Carolyn Hughley. And so Mayor and council, I will tell you, on July 16th, State Representative Carolyn Hughley advised me that she had a conversation with Walmart's Director of Public Affairs and Government Relations Representative, Mr. Glenn Wilkins, about a small grant opportunity they could offer to a local community nonprofit organization. And Representative Hughley advised me that she wanted to do something for this organization that they are going to deliver a check to this morning and needed to have an application to Mr. Wilkins by 12 noon the next day, within 24 hours. And so she wanted my help to make this happen, and so I immediately called Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge and requested that she prepare an application request for us to middle on behalf of the Liberty Theater. Deputy City Manager Hodge prepared the application using the Liberty Theater feasibility study, the building assessment that we had already completed on the Liberty Theater a few months prior, and she delivered the application request to me before noon the next day so that I could forward that application document to Mr. Glenn Wilkins for Walmart funding consideration. The application funding request was approved by Walmart, and Mr. Glenn Wilkins is here to make a check presentation today. The Walmart funding will go directly to this local nonprofit organization and not to the City of Columbus. Therefore, the City of Columbus is not the fiscal agent for the funding and have no financial gain nor responsibility for the funding. We simply wanted to help this local nonprofit organization, and we will continue to support this local nonprofit organization as one of the jewels of this community that makes Columbus a great place to live, work, and play. So with that, Mr. Wilkins, I am going to ask you to step to the mic and turn it over to you to make this check presentation to this local community nonprofit organization. And thank you for being here this morning and for considering Columbus for this funding opportunity. So Mr. Wilkins, if you will, and make sure you introduce all of the great Walmart representatives who are here with you.
Great. So good morning. Thank you for having us here. It's good to see a lot of familiar faces here. I've stood before council before here, and you guys have always challenged me in a very good way, challenged Walmart, whether we're building stores, working in the community, and so thank you for that. And that is why Columbus is always, has a special place in my heart. Walmart understands the great work that you all do here. We appreciate your support of the business. We know that we have a large customer base here as well that we want to take care of. What I'm going to ask is that each store manager introduce themselves. I think by having a name, a face, and a voice is a lot more productive than me just rattling off names. So if you wouldn't mind just introducing your name, what store you represent?
Good morning. My name is John Nickerson. I'm store manager of Neighborhood Market located on Manchester Expressway. Thank you, and thank you for having us here.
Good morning. I'm Corinne Jackson. I'm the store manager of Woolly To Boulevard next to Sam. Thank you for having us.
Good morning. I'm Daniel Fryerson. I'm the store manager of the airport Walmart. Thank you for having us.
Good morning. I'm Elise Hackstall. I'm a market manager of Neighborhood Market, so I've got the three in Columbus and the one in Phoenix City and La Grange and 10 others, so we appreciate you all having us
Good morning. I'm Koshira Hu. I'm the store manager at the Gateway Road location, and thank you for having us here.
So I would imagine a lot of these faces you're familiar with, that you know. I know Koshira's very involved here in the city as well, and we appreciate all that you do as store managers. To Isaiah's point, I did have a phone call that I put in to Representative Hughley. She's been a confidant to me and a great leader at the Capitol for you all as well. And Walmart came to me and said, we have some money that we want to give back to Georgia. Where would you think that this money could go, where we could work within the African-American community, support some historical legacies that are there? And of course, Representative Hughley, right off the bat, had an idea, so we thank you for that. I know that this goes deep with a lot of folks here. I was talking to Representative Calvin Smyrie, and he was talking about how he did the groundbreaking for Liberty Theater as well. So we appreciate everything that the leadership here has done. So with no further ado, we have a check presentation that we would like to make to Liberty Theater. It's for $50,000. And if you, I don't know where we stand, where we do the presentation. Do we all just turn around?
Yeah, well, the camera can see you either way.
Okay. So let's turn around, and we'll do the check presentation as socially distanced as we can. We're going to face this way?
Yes.
So let's face forward. And Liberty, if you guys want to come up. So to Liberty Theater, we appreciate all that you've been doing. We know that there is challenging times for us all, but we want to present you with this check for $50,000, and we look forward to the continued relationship with you in the future. And please get to know your store managers that are here and to build those relationships as well. We thank you very much. And the real check. I have that as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Willis, just let me add my thanks to you and to Walmart and to all of the managers that are here today. They do an outstanding job, and they're great ambassadors for your company here in our community. And we could not think of a more deserving and outstanding recipient for your generosity. So thank you, sir. Counselor Woodson?
Mr. Woodson, I just want to say personally, yes, the district representative, hi, good morning. Thank you very much. Walmart's always been a great corporate sponsor in our city, and I appreciate it. And I want you to know I still miss Koshira at South Hook and Victory Drive. I miss her very much. But thank you for all that Walmart does, because Walmart does have their thumbprint in a lot of projects in our city, big and small, and we truly appreciate it. And we thank you for even building the Victory Drive Walmart for us. As you can tell, it's always busy, never a dull moment. But thank you very much. I truly appreciate it as the district representative.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Huff?
Mr. Wilkins, on this side. Thank you so much, and I share with Counselor Woodson in that area over at Victory Drive. And we thank you for taking care of all of your people, and especially my Koshira Hu. We fought long and hard to keep her at 1338, but she's doing a great job where she is. I visit all of your stores all around town, trying to spread it out, but she knows how dear. She and her husband, my wife, and I, we all are very, very close, and we talk a lot. But you all do a great job in the community. We thank you for the donation, and whatever else you can do, I'm sure we'll knock on your door and see if you can help us out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Anderson?
Good morning. Thank you. Mr. Wilkins and Walmart, first of all, on behalf of the Board of Directors and myself, thank you so much. Personally, Walmart is my absolute favorite place in the world, so this means a lot. And of course, Representative Hughley and the city manager and the rest of you, thank you so much for always thinking about the Liberty. This means a lot, and thank you.
Thanks again. Mr. Mayor and council, I've got a few items on the work session agenda, and I am going to call on Planning Director Rick Jones at this time to do a Motts Green update.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, of course. I'm here to talk about one of my favorite projects. And if you can't detect the sarcasm in my voice, please listen again. We want to talk to you about Motts Green. If we can have the presentation up for that, we'll go ahead and get started this morning. This is our update on Motts Green. This is a project we've been talking about now for the last five years. And you think the amount of effort and work and really money we put into this project, we were building a new interstate in this community, but that's not the case that you're going to see here. This is the history of effort. Like I said, we started this thing back in 2015. The idea was really to take that postage-side stamp of a project down there at the end of 14th Street Bridge behind the Total System campus and actually do something with it. It's really the last remaining piece of puzzle here in terms of dealing with the Riverwalk overhaul. And again, it's not a very big project, but we set aside a million dollars to do this project, $800,000. It was coming from federal funds, federal transportation funds, in terms of making this project work. We were required to match with $200,000 for the grand total again of a million dollars. We issued RFP back in 2017 to Hack Burishaw for this project. At that time also, we came back and did an update, presented the project to you back in 2018. And then we, at the request of several council members, we had actual tours down there back in June of '18, just to give you a feel and understanding. And for those of you who were on council at that time, we'll be glad to do the same again for you if you so desire, to make that happen. Like I said, we had basically almost designed and sent to the same kind of capacity and same kind of effort that you would for an interstate highway here, because we had to go back and do archaeological and environmental stuff that we'd already done really when we did the 14th Street Pedestrian Bridge and other projects down there pertaining to the Riverwalk itself. And you may recall, some of you may recall that we argued with GDOT and others that there wasn't any need to do additional work of this type, but they insisted, and that drove our price up at the same time in terms of making that happen. We had to do some design modification. Remember, there was a controversy about the bridge that was going to overhang into the river itself, that it's not really more sort of a bridge, as it was going to be a vista, a place where you could actually view the river and kind of overhang the river itself. We did away with that at your insistence, so we took that back. We provided some cost savings for this project and so forth. And that time, we talked to you last, we said we will be out to bid on this project in 2019. Well, it's 2020, I realize, and we're not quite there yet, we're getting close. This is Motts Green's location map for you. But as you'll see on this slide coming up, all the other things that have happened really around Motts Green over the last five years, five years plus really in some cases. City Mills itself is now being talked about being renovated. Of course, we just had the groundbreaking for the new Mercer School of Medicine. We had the 14th Street Bridge. Total System's been an anchor down there for the last 20 years. We've got new hotels coming here. And a lot of this is all because of the synergy we, as a government, have committed over the last 20, 30 years to make this project really happen. And so the last little piece of the puzzle, I said earlier, is Motts Green in terms of enhancing that entire area and making it all blend together, because if you really go down there right now, it's something a little bit of an eyesore in terms of the way it's been really overused over time and the things that have just happened and how it's been taken care of for whatever reason involved with that. Again, you can get the idea of the real synergy that goes on around Motts Green itself. This is basically the existing layout of the land now itself down there with, we built something of a roundabout down there at the end of that to tie into the 14th Street Pedestrian Bridge. The area you see behind the big build, the big parking garage, of course, is Total System. And at that point here, this is the area itself in terms of what we're dealing with now. The proposal really calls more like for this, for cleaning and repairing the existing monuments, the big archway down there, for instance, from that standpoint, the railing on top of, on the mill, it extends back toward the river itself, aligning the Riverwalks. And now when you come up underneath the bridge, you actually go straight instead of having to make a jog there, put new sod in, repairing and re-landscaping the existing grassed area down there, which could be a nice venue, a nice site for activities going on in terms of whatever. could be a nice venue, a nice site for activities going on, in terms of whatever door activity you may want to have, whether it be concerts or showing of movies or whatever the case may be, that could certainly be the area for it. And then, of course, also this idea of new historic signage. We want to show you that, because this is a very historical place to involve with this in terms of everything that goes on around the river itself. This is the idea in terms of putting these markers up that would identify the history of Motts Green and what it means to the community as a whole. For instance, we talk about the Great Falls of the Chattahoochee, there's a description on that. This is all verbiage that's been vetted out to the Historic Columbus Foundation and to others to make sure we got it right. The dams, of course, at the City Mills, which were a key item we just got through talking about and other things. The Eagle and Phoenix Dam, which was imploded, of course, for whitewater and things of that. The water power and industrial development, what makes Columbus really a great city, and especially at its infancy, by going forward from that. The wooden timber frame dams, a lot of folks don't realize there were such things down there. And what these monuments do is really capture the essence of the history of this part of the community, so that it becomes a focal point for folks visiting Columbus or just going down to the Riverwalk itself and enjoying it and seeing the real history that comes about this area. This gives you an idea about what this site would look like. We're looking back toward the Total System Garage, the little small monuments there, really the plaques you saw, the markers for that, to make that happen from that. Of course, it's a little bit closer view from that standpoint, how they would be oriented to the site itself and how folks could go and see them. This is, again, basically what the site still looks like today. There's not a whole lot of anything down there right now, other than basically the big monuments and so forth. This, again, is the idea of making that area and improving that area and upgrading it to make it a quality area and really a focal point for the Riverwalk itself. Now, in our last conversation, we came to you and said, "This is our budget now, and we're going to stay up under a million dollars." And we have. We've done what we've asked, you've asked us to do in this, in terms of that. And it turns out, laying out the basic services, you see the additional services on here in terms of what it costs for us to do environmental work, project redesign, things of that nature on here, and we gave you a toll for that. At that time, we purported a budget of about $723,000 to actually do construction. And we believed in that budget at that time. Since then, though, for, again, for a grand total here of $991,000, staying up on that million-dollar market you so requested. We've got, since that time, though, we finalized everything else, we've dealt with GDOT, which is a monumental task in itself, and nothing against GDOT, I'm just telling you, the rules and regulations they put for us made it very difficult at times to get to this point. Since then, we've been authorized to go out to bids. We went out to bids on this thing. We bid at two different times over this last summer. On May 25th, we received a bid for construction now of 1.173. That came from Earthscapes Incorporated. The bid was really rejected because it just didn't meet the disadvantaged business enterprise requirements in terms of what GDOT set aside for, which basically is, they're saying, they said a certain percentage of the contract has to be handled by DVEs in the community. So when that failed, we had no other choice but to go back out and rebid the project again. At the same time, we understood that we were over that projected budget. We told you that basically that $700,000, $800,000 we could set aside for construction. We knew that. So we also, at the same time, went back and tried to determine whether there are certain things we could take out of the budget that would bring us down closer to our cost. We have proposed to you, and there was just no way of getting to that point. We went back out again on bids itself on August 5th. Got a little bit better bid, not much. This 1.137 came back. Of course, our construction budget is showing at 728. We've got a shortfall right now of about $400,000, a little over $400,000 for this project to go forward. And that's where we are really right now, is where do we want to go? What do you want us to do? My position, of course, is we've made a Herculean effort in terms of trying to do this project and trying to make it come to fruition and come to make it be a reality. Because we got everything else in place down there on the Riverwalk that we've talked about doing, with the exception of this one small area. And so, of course, my proposal to you is, let's go forward with this bid, and let's go ahead and complete this project and get it done with, involved with that. We're asking really for half a million dollars in terms of doing this project. I know we're at a little over $400,000, but I want to be sure that if nothing else comes out and it really bites us on this thing and says, "Oh, we can't meet that $406,000, $407,000 budget," and I have to come back again with my hat in my hand again and ask you to give us more money. I'd rather do it upfront now and say, "This is what we're looking for. This is what we think we can achieve this project with," based on the information we know today in terms of where we're trying to go as a project for the most part. If we go this route, we would, of course, award the project back to Earthscapes, get them to proceed, get started. And we anticipate being complete with this project by spring of next year, in time, really, for that, I guess, when the season starts to warm up a little bit better and folks really get to use the Riverwalk itself. There's never an ideal time in terms of closing down an amenity like this, particularly the Riverwalk, but this would be the good time to be doing this kind of construction, because it limits the number of crowds or folks actually using the Riverwalk at this particular point. So, Mr. Mayor, what we're asking today is basically, we've come back with that proposal. We want to make sure that we go forward with this, though, and allow us to complete the project we've already started.
So what would be the source of that money?
It'd be coming out of the paving fund.
Okay. All right, we have Counselor Crabbe with a question?
Thank you. Thanks, Rick. I see in these pictures, you're talking about the area between the two arches, but what about the area below, between the large arch and the river, on the Riverwalk area? Is that included in this budget?
Yes, excuse me. All of that is included. Counselor Crabbe, the grassed area will be re-sodded and landscaped. Some of the trees would actually be pruned back. There would be lighting provided on there for nighttime events and things of that nature. The actual Riverwalk itself would be cleaned up. There would actually be a new railing, a new, really, a new site prepared for that, that you could actually walk closer to the river, nothing to the effect they had initially. But it'll be a railing put in there that'll allow you to actually kind of look over the river itself, both going up north and south as well. A lot of the Riverwalk will be cleaned. The monuments will be cleaned as well. All that's included in that price. We're trying to make sure that this becomes more of a garden spot than what it actually is today.
So the monuments will remain down at the Riverwalk, and then there'll be new monuments up above?
There will be the smaller monuments up above, the historical markers that we, I showed you, the placards themselves, we have there at the top. But the monuments, the large monuments will stay in place.
No, I'm talking about down in the Riverwalk area, down closer to the river. There's some monument, there's some little historic markers down there currently. And it seems like they're saying what these new historic markers are saying, that you're planning on putting up above? So it seems redundant.
The markers closer to the river, I remember, are talking more about the mill itself, if I remember correctly. What we're talking about is really more the history of the site itself with the new markers. So that's, and I'm working purely off of memory on that, but those are not going to be changed at all. Those will be cleaned and kept in place, because they do have a value to us.
Okay, I'm working off memory, too. And it seemed like when I was looking at these new markers, that I don't remember seeing the wooden timber frame dams, but it seems like some of these others are, I've read them before. And so I thought, especially this Great Falls of the Chattahoochee, it seems like that one is down near the river, if I, but it's been a while since I've been down there.
Yeah, I don't recall that, but I'll stand to be corrected, but I don't recall seeing that one down there. Again, the idea is to highlight the historical value of this area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor John House?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Jones, if we're going to take $500,000 out of the paving fund for this, is there any negative impact on any other projects planned?
No, I'll yield to the deputy city manager who handles the paving and, but the answer is no.
Okay.
No, there wouldn't be any impact. All the planned projects would still proceed as on schedule.
All right, thank you. Doesn't appear to be any more questions.
And so, Mr. Mayor and council, I will bring this back on a future agenda, but we just kind of wanted to update you today. But I do want to just take the time to say, as Director Jones has presented the Motts Green update and that project. Mayor, I had the, I took the opportunity yesterday to go down in the Bay Street area and just ride around and walk around. And I got out the car and went through the rapids of various shops and restaurants that have been put down there by W.C. Bradley. I rode through the apartment units, the rapids there, and looked at the Indigo Hotel as they are continuing to do the construction work on that. Looked at the other hotels that are being constructed. And from the Indigo, I could look up at the 14th Street Pedestrian Bridge, and I can tell you, it was just beautiful. It was a beautiful look. I watched the foot traffic that's down there, especially when I went into shops there, various restaurants under one roof that you flow around. It's something that we visited when we went out of town, a similar project on the inner city visit recently. And I just tell you the truth, I didn't, you know, it was, the feel was not like I was in the Columbus that I've always known. And so I was imagining, when all of that development is done, to include Motts Green, what it's going to be like down in that area of uptown. And if anyone has been away from Columbus for five to 10 years, they're not going to know that area. And I can imagine, when things get back on schedule, when COVID is out of here and the whitewater rafting and all of this new development has come to fruition, to include the beautiful rendering of Motts Green, it's just going to be something to brag about, to talk about. So I took the opportunity yesterday to do that, and I mean, I am real, I am very proud. I just wanted to say that this morning.
Your favorite article, you keep referring to, talks about a 20-year overnight success. And you know, what's interesting is, there is momentum in addition to the item, the structures that are already coming out of the ground are already in place. You know, when you add in the City Mills renovation and what they've got in mind to do over there, you've got Mercer School of Medicine.
Yes.
I mean, and Motts Green really is sort of the linchpin and the connector for those areas, because you hit that 14th Street Pedestrian Bridge, and we're now seeing some development occur going farther north, and Motts Green is sort of the pivot point that kind of is helping that go. So I agree with you. I think that the energy that was sort of sucked out of everybody with this pandemic, Columbus held on to some of that, and this construction continued. It kept people working, and when the fruits of that construction labor come to bear, it's going to be, you should be proud. If you haven't visited down there, walked that Riverwalk, gone down there to the pedestrian bridge, you really should. You ought to get to know your hometown again. More about it. Mayor Protem Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, when you bring this back on your agenda, would you sort of detail a little more into what Mr. Jones covered as far as everything that's included in the $1 million project, and then the $400,000, $500,000 that you've asked the city to include? Mr. Jones went over it, as I said, but I'd like a little more detail when you come back to us. Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to, as Director Jones remained at the podium, he's going to give a Second Avenue Streetscape study update. Mr. Jones?
Before I get started here, I want to put a shameless plug in here, talking about the Riverwalk and everything else we've got going on down there. We, as a community, are up for an award from the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. We're in the, I guess, the finals now, if you want to call it that, where we will be recognized potentially as having the best project, engineering project, I guess, for the last year or so. The reason I say that is, we have to vote for this, though, they don't give it to us automatically. And we're encouraging our citizens to go to our planning website, you know, on the web, of course, or on our Facebook page, and you will see a link there, and you're allowed to vote at least once every 24 hours. We encourage you to do that, please, because that's important. Again, more public recognition for all of us, so please do that if you will, if you have the time. We want to talk to you this morning about two transportation projects, potential transportation projects that are important to this community, particularly in dealing with its future in terms of how we provide access to the things in this community. The first one I want to share with you this morning is dealing with the Second Avenue Streetscape study. Many of you may or may not realize, but this is a major, major entranceway into Columbus, particularly into the uptown area. And for many of our visitors, it's one of the first things they get to see, or not see in terms of some of the things that are going on. Second Avenue has improved over time, but it still needs some tender loving care, and it still needs some affection from us. And so what we've gone back and done now is commissioned AECom to come in and do a study on this and tell us pretty much what we need, what we need, what we can do for to actually improve the overall quality of Second Avenue. So I'm going to introduce to you Mickey O'Brien, who is with AECom. He is here to present their findings and tell you from that point where we want to go from there. So Mickey, if you'll come, I would appreciate it.
So, good morning, Mayor Henderson, city council, city manager, Mr. Hughley, city staff, and interested citizens that are here today. My name is Mickey O'Brien. I am the project manager for this initial study of Second Avenue. With me, I have James Anderson. He is our lead traffic engineer, and we work quite frequently on these types of projects. Today, I'm going to give you an overview of the project. And I must say, this is the first time I've presented in a 10,000-seat arena. So I'll never forget this, one. And two, I'm expecting Beyonce or Alan Jackson, part of this meeting, to come out from behind the curtain. But no, this is a very nice facility, and I'll compliment you on the measures you have taken to protect your citizens and your staff, Mayor. So with that said, I think there is a, let's see here, this will advance the slides, I believe. Okay. So the project need and purpose on this project is essentially to create a new vision with the public's input and city staff for Second Avenue, to improve the aesthetic appeal and the functionality of the road for all users. Additionally, our team explored, let me know if you can't hear me as well, explored a lane reduction concept, or what is awfully referred to as a road diet. Our team is very experienced in implementing and designing Our team is very experienced in implementing and designing these types of, of projects where feasible and where it makes sense. So as Rick mentioned, this really is a gateway into your city to uptown and, and serves really as, I would say, the front door into your city. Therefore, first impressions are lasting. When I travel, what I remember is how good the food is, were the people nice, and visually, what did I see? So there are some things to keep in mind. Currently, Second Avenue does not convey the same sense of character and care that Broadway and Uptown and even Veterans Memorial Highway have. So again, this is a great opportunity to change the course of that. So most of these projects are, at this scale, are funded through federal grants. And this slide shows you about where we're at in this process. This is the initial phase of this process. We're essentially setting the table for dinner or whatnot, creating a vision with public input, city staff, and, and creating a document that can then be used to help fund, seek grants and funding for the project. On this project, it's been about a one-year process, starting in October 2019. Our role was to study the existing conditions, conduct a traffic analysis, and evaluate options, conduct public input sessions, build on the responses that we have received, and then develop a final concept based on public input and city staff input. The goal was to complete this study by October, November of 2020. So the, the project limit, so we're looking at, from plan view on an aerial, looking down on the project corridor. The project corridor starts just north of Manchester Expressway, right as J.R. Allen Parkway connects into Second Avenue. So north will always be on your right as we move through this presentation. That's in order to get the length of the road and as little slides as possible. The speed limit is posted at 35 miles an hour. As you know, typically cars are exceeding that. So the driver behavior is a bit aggressive currently out there. There's approximately 22,000 cars that drive this corridor a day. That equates to 8 million people that drive through your city a year. And just think of how many people you can influence on the perception of the city by creating a new front door leading into your beautiful uptown area. And I just wanted to point that out, as first impressions and last impressions are lasting, and these types of projects can promote civic pride and ownership. So next, we'll look at some of the existing conditions on the corridor. North of 32nd Street, you're dealing with a five-lane section. And, and south of 32nd Street, you're dealing with a four-lane section primarily. The corridor does have sidewalks. They're in different conditions. Some have been recently installed along with some, some landscape, which is looking really nice. Many of the sidewalks, though, are substandard, and ADA ramps would also need to be upgraded. There are overhead utilities on either side of the road that we needed to work around and work with. Moving on. So during the traffic analysis, the traffic analysis is really the basis for all of our decisions that we make on the road configuration. Next. So we took traffic counts in, in a number of locations throughout the corridor, coordinating with the city staff. We also took pedestrian and bicycling counts as well along the corridor. We have identified five pedestrian crossings that will make the corridor safer. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as we move forward. Moving forward. I think I felt, maybe I mentioned this, but this is a state route, 85. So being a state route, there are certain requirements that we need to uphold through GDOT. We're very versed with working with GDOT and making these streetscapes happen. So we do not anticipate any significant issues at this point in time. So the alternatives considered here, we, as I mentioned, we looked at a lane diet reduction. We also, which is also called a road diet, reducing the four-lane sections to two-through lanes and a center turn lane at intersections. Many times, this does work. In order to successfully implement a road diet on this section of road, you would need an approximate 30% of diversion of traffic off of this north-south corridor. There is a strong directional pattern of traffic to the Total Systems Campus in the peak hours in the morning and the peak hours in the afternoon. Therefore, your, your primary traffic is moving in a north-to-south or south-to-north direction. So your east-west connectivity is not as strong, and, and that presents some problems when we start looking at road diet configurations. So as it turns out, after further review, we do not think Second Avenue is a good candidate for a road diet conversion due to the number of cars and the directional pattern, which is primarily north-to-south on the peak hours. If we did implement a road diet, it could increase substantially your delay at the intersections. We also looked at adding a median throughout the corridor. The median would preserve operations, add safety enhancements, and create opportunities for further gateway experiences. So with all projects, the public input is a critical component to successfully delivering these projects. We essentially serve as a conduit for their input. We apply our experience and our expertise to provide a check and balance with, with these comments we've received. And I would also like to mention that this public process event was conducted really at the height of the first phase of the COVID pandemic. During this time, with the help of city staff, we were able to obtain 58, with 58 responses, which has exceeded our expectations, but also really speaks to the passion your citizens have for the city of Columbus. So we were frankly very pleased with the number of respondents that we had gotten. As it turns out, the responses we've received from the public really reinforce the goals of this project. That's not normally the case, but in this case, that is exactly what happened. So as we move forward, we can see that corridor aesthetics was their major main concern, crosswalk locations, driver behavior or speeding vehicles, and sidewalk conditions were really the main focus of, of the respondences. As you can see, there's some additional percentages associated with some other categories, and we'll continue to go through those. The percentages get lower as you, as you move through the process. So once again, in this particular project, the goals of the project firmly aligned with the public input. So design concepts. So how do we accomplish this? We utilize a streetscape toolkit essentially. We utilize medians, street trees, pedestrian lighting, vertical elements which tend to calm traffic. These also have a second function in providing this gateway experience into the city. You can see the pedestrian lights and the cross-sections, and then up top is the plan view. And I know it's hard to read, but this is a fairly long corridor, so we left you hard copies as well for your review. And all of this will be rolled into a final report. One last thing I'd like to mention here with the street trees. The street trees are located in a cadence, aligned with pedestrian lighting. And what this does is it invokes a formality as you enter into the city, a sense of order, civic pride, and lasting visual memories as people come and leave the city. Additionally, it provides additional shade for the pedestrians and the users of the facility. This same cross-section continues down through the corridor with some minor changes. I'm not going to really focus a whole lot of attention on that. Really, the median widths vary in sizes essentially. But this concept is developed to where there's flexibility built into it to where if we needed additional room, it could be taken out of the median or into the buffers along each side of the street. Moving forward, I'm just going to kind of move, we're moving south, in a southerly direction. Again, north is always to your right. This is between 38th and 42nd Street. We're proposing some additional pedestrian crossings in this location. Again, the medians continue down. As you can see, there's a break in street trees. That's primarily due to overhead utilities or lack of adjacent right-of-way. Moving forward. One second here. 35th to 38th Street, the same scenario. Except between 38th and 35th Street, the context of the character of the surroundings is different. That is something else we carefully look at. We see this as a potentially a village context. So we would incorporate wider sidewalks, utilizing the city's design codes, eight feet wide, a furniture zone, more site furniture, again, and some paving accents of brick pavers, which the citizens really, really supported through the public involvement process. I'm going to quickly kind of move through the remainder of these. Again, it's a lot of the same comments that I've mentioned previously. We do recommend having bus shelters at all bus stops where feasible. The ladders across the street, the white ladders, are the additional and improved pedestrian crossings we recommend. Moving on. 23rd to 28th Street, the same type of concept is, continues southerly. And we have some potential gateway locations. At 23rd Street, that would be a great opportunity to have a sign that directs people to your wonderful Riverwalk area. So, so, so more notification for people to the Riverwalk is a recommendation that we, we would highly recommend. Continuing on, we're almost through here. This is the end of the project. From 19th Street to 23rd Street, there's an existing railway there. We would also recommend using ADA concrete pads that allow ADA people to safely cross the railroad crossings. Again, and then some gateway locations at Talboton Road, 19th Street. Continuing on, so the inspiration and design here. So the city of Columbus is very unique, that you have a rich cultural and natural resources. I would say unlike any city in Georgia, and, and I would say as, as much as any city in the South. The city has embraced these resources, and they should continue to embrace these resources. The Chattahoochee River, your mills, the historic elements you have throughout here. Your adaptive reuse is just amazing, and I think it, it is, it is an example for others to admire around the country. The public also realized that these existing indigenous materials, such as the stones in the river or the brick within the mills, or the corten steel associated with some of these older buildings could be reused and implemented as part of the streetscape to give Columbus a unique sense of identity. And lastly, these are some concepts of what the gateway elements could be at the northern end of the project and the southern end. This is based again on the context, using indigenous materials. The wave patterns from the rapids, the corten steel, and the Chattahoochee stone from the river would be some considerations for the project. And then secondary gateway concepts, again, building on these same themes of local indigenous materials. And then lastly, well, not lastly, we're getting close here. The construction estimate for this project is approximately $10 million in 2020 construction costs. This is subject to change based on further engineering, construction fluctuations in the market. This cost does not include the relocation of overhead utilities. The next steps for this project, we'll conduct a second stakeholder public input after this meeting with the concept provided. Once we've received any additional comments, we'll address the comments, include public input, and then deliver a final report and recommendations in fall of 2020. Next is 38th Street, existing conditions. So much potential here, so much potential, I can't overemphasize. And there's a before, here's an after that we pulled together. Again, in these areas, we would use more of the brick paving, we would have wider sidewalks, street furniture, banner arms, street trees, new mast arms for the signals, and really clean this up. And then here's another view looking south on Second Avenue. You can see the walls along the western, or on the eastern side of the road. Pressure washing them or adding a veneer of granite or stone or the Chattahoochee stone along those walls would be something to consider. And then this is an after of what that may look like. And with that, I just want to emphasize, this is a unique opportunity for the city of Columbus, creating this new gateway, this front door, an extension of uptown or Broadway. So you don't have to navigate and, and go too far until you realize you're in a very special place. This should happen immediately as you get off J.R. Allen Parkway. I would like to thank Rick Jones, Linda Temples, and David Cooper. I would like to thank Rick Jones, Linda Temples, and David Cooper, especially during these trying times, in helping us get through the public input process because it has not been easy, and they did a tremendous job in assisting us. So, I want to thank you for your time and the opportunity to assist the city of Columbus on this exciting project, the first step that lays the groundwork for future improvements to Second Avenue. And with that, I'll turn it over to questions that anyone may have.
Mr. O'Brien, that's a great, great concept. I think all of us recognize the need to do something with our gateway, that entranceway into what is the heartbeat of our community, and hopefully stimulate some growth going up that northern corridor, which we see happening now, but to kind of continue to encourage that.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem Gary Allen has a question.
Here over here.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
It's the arena, that's what we get lost in.
Yeah.
You talked a little bit early on about the 30% diversion of traffic.
Yes, sir.
And so, I wanted to talk, I got a couple of questions around that. My concern is obviously the impact of the existing northbound traffic. One question I had was, are you looking at purchasing right-of-way? Will any of the roadway have to be widened? I know we're adding median coverages in there, and that's going to, the way the pictures look, it looks like it would not directly impact the flow of traffic, but talk a little bit more about the diversion concept.
Yeah, and I may need to turn this, so I'll make a pass at it, and then if I don't have it nailed down, I can turn it over to my lead traffic engineer. Essentially, for the road diet to operate with an acceptable level of service, 30% of that north-south traffic in the peak times in the morning and in the afternoon would need to be diverted off of Second Avenue to get that down to a road diet.
So, I guess we're moving them over to the expressway?
They would need to be diverted over to Third or First essentially, or a parallel road that gets them to the Total Systems Campus. That's where most of your traffic is coming from and to at these peak hours, is this north-south sort of main directional traffic pattern.
I understand moving them back and forth, but the only avenue I can think that they could take would be the Manchester Expressway. The other streets that you mentioned are not completely open all the way without significant stoppage going all the way down.
Exactly, that's right.
So, and about the sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
Or the right-of-way?
Okay.
Would there be any other?
Yeah, so, we were directed by city staff to avoid obtaining additional right-of-way from the onset of the project. That was our directive, and we've done our very best. What we've done is we've built in flexibility within the cross-section to where if we are impacting an adjacent property owner, we can reduce the buffers on the side, on the shoulders, and/or the median widths to avoid impacting and/or additional right-of-way. That is the goal, and that is really what we've built into the concept at this stage. Now, once we get into further engineering and we have a detailed survey, right now we're working with available GIS information, we may find that we have ample right-of-way, or we may find out in some places that it's tighter than what we envisioned. But again, we're building in some flexibility within the design to where we can mitigate those impacts.
Okay, and one more question regarding the medians.
Yes, sir.
Would, how would you gauge where they would be?
Yeah.
I mean, there are several businesses that have high traffic along that area.
Right.
Along Second, so where, how would you determine?
Yeah. So, it's a very, very good question, and there are trade-offs with limited access type concepts. What I will say is because the city of Columbus has a grid system, it allows these limited-access roads to work much, much better. So, in some cases, you may have a minor inconvenience, but the safety, and what, we take safety, we put safety at the top of the chart. The road has to be safe, and we think for a minor inconvenience to a business owner, potentially, the safety improvements would outweigh the minor inconvenience to the business owners. Where we have proposed openings are typically where we're seeing traffic patterns going primarily, and/or where the density of housing and/or businesses is high enough that would warrant a break in the median. And then lastly, if it's a through road and continues and connects on over, then that's certainly going to be a curb break for turning purposes.
Okay. Very good presentation, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Counselor House, over here to your left.
Yes.
Just a fast question to make sure I understand what you're recommending. Are you recommending the road diet?
No, sir.
Or not?
No, sir.
Okay, because it'd be too hard because there's too many cars, right?
Yes, and the, well, that's part of it. The other part of it is the direction of your traffic at these peak hours. What we don't want to do is back that traffic up more and more in the peak hours because your phones will be ringing off the hook, and we don't want that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. And you know, I think with regards to the medians, we, if I think back to when we did the streetscapes on veterans, I mean, it is, you've just got to really engage the public and the businesses and make sure their voices are heard because
Yes.
You know, it's all about that balance, as you pointed out, but there is going to be some inconvenience, and I know we had to do some workarounds with some
Yes.
turnaround areas on those roads, but
Yes, sir.
I'm excited about the presentation, though. I think it shows us what that entrance into the beginning of our downtown area could look like. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, and Council, and City Manager. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, as you say that about the entrance into our Uptown, it goes back to our earlier conversation about what's going on in Uptown, and this is going to be the gateway to all of that redevelopment, new development, the excitement in Uptown. So, it's exciting.
And we had an opportunity, I think, with John Hutchinson and Rick Jones to go to Asheville for a charrette, and this is one of the key points they talked about, is that there's no sense of identity as you get off the JR Allen Parkway and you start to get into it. There should be some clear, visible, recognizable change that lets you know you're entering someplace special. And we tried to do that with all of our, all the areas of the community, but this is an opportunity to remedy an area that we really have not done yet.
And the final word on that is, it's all coming together.
Yeah.
And so, Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Continuing with our planning director, Rick Jones, the JR Allen Parkway study that I know there's a lot of interest in as well. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. You should know one thing about both these studies a little bit, is when we met with consultants on separate occasions, we basically told them, you have a blank sheet of paper here now. Mickey just told you about dealing with the right-of-way that Mayor Protem asked about, and one of the things about the right-of-way on Second Avenue was, is, we knew that was going to be an expensive proposition because, as we're finding out on the Spiderweb project, we have some high-intensity lines that Georgia Power owns, and those are expensive to move. And so, we were, and then the way that roadway is configured in certain places, it's very, very tight, so we said, leave the right-of-way alone, you got to basically deal with everything else, but for the most part, you have a blank sheet of paper. We don't want to give you any kind of preconceived notions about anything. Same thing applies to the JR Allen Parkway study. We know we got issues on that roadway today. It is a major east-west corridor for this part of the state and into Alabama as well, particularly in dealing with freight traffic now, that's, a lot of the traffic is going back and forth from either Brunswick or in Savannah to Brunswick, to Hoover, to Tuscaloosa, or wherever else they can find, for dealing with automobile manufacturing right now. A lot of that shipment is going back and forth, and we just see that increasing, not decreasing, over a period of time. So, now is the prime time to be concerned about, what do we do with that roadway? Does it need to be expanded? Does it need to be widened? What kind of improvements can we make to it? And that's what we asked for from our consultants from StanTech. I'm going to introduce Keith Strickland to come forward and share with you what they have found and what they are going to recommend to us about what needs to be done. Again, keeping in mind that this is, their answer, not ours, and that's the way it should be. We wanted to hear from them. I want to say one other thing about, when we first started this study, because it runs from the state line all the way out to Kitten Lake, we did invite our friends from Alabama, from Fink City, to participate because we really see a need for that to continue across the river. They did not have the funding to continue on with that, with this project, unfortunately. The funds we have are basically controlled by GDOT, and so, of course, it has to stay within the state of Georgia, but we have reached out to them. They do know about the study. To some degree, they have been included in that conversation, and we will continue to work with them. But again, here's another important roadway we want to talk to you about this morning. So, Keith, if you will come and share what you know, we would appreciate it. Good morning.
Thank you, Rick. Good morning, councilors, mayor, city manager. My name is Keith Strickland, as Rick mentioned. I'm StanTech's project manager for the JR Allen Parkway Corridor Study. Unlike the Second Avenue presentation that you just listened to, which is, was a very detailed analysis of the Second Avenue corridor, our project was a very high-level review of traffic operations and safety in the JR Allen Parkway corridor. So, with that, the agenda for my presentation this morning, we'll start with the status of the study, then I'll talk a little bit about our design workshop that we conducted, then go over the majority of the highway and multimodal improvements that we currently have as recommendations, talk about the schedule and next steps. As I mentioned, this study covers a very large area. It's a 10-mile corridor, starting from the Chattahoochee River Bridge on the west side, going all the way past the Flat Rock Road-Kitten Lake intersection on the east. And what we are looking at is what kind of traffic operational problems or safety problems that are in this study area, as well as any other multimodal issues that we could identify. Similar to the Second Avenue study, we conducted a four-week virtual design workshop. During that time, on our project website, we had a map that the citizens could go to and give comments on any specific area of the corridor, issues that they would like for our study team to address. Most of the comments that we received that were highly related were either improved safety or increased capacity to reduce congestion. You know, they were not satisfied at the level of congestion in the corridor. The multimodal comments were primarily related to adding sidewalks or other pedestrian amenities, as well as bus stop shelters and other types of bus stop amenities. The next slides, I'm going to go very quickly through the majority of the projects that we are currently recommending that be looked at by future studies. And I'm actually, the projects are going to start on the west end of the corridor and go, extend to the east. So, the first project is the US-80 Eastbound Auxiliary Lane that we're recommending, starting at the River Trace Drive on-ramp and extending eastbound all the way to the Second Avenue off-ramp. So, this project includes the widening of the eastbound Chattahoochee River Bridge. The companion project in the westbound direction would also start at Second Avenue and go all the way to River Chase Drive. The next project is actually a roadside clearing project just on the east end of the eastbound bridge over the river, and this is primarily to remove vegetation that is blocking the view of the existing signs at the end of the bridge. And also, the cost that we're showing here actually includes a new overhead "Welcome to Columbus" sign as to emphasize that this route is an entrance to the city of Columbus from Alabama. The next project is another roadside clearing project in the westbound direction in the same general area. This includes clearing vegetation on the shoulder to improve the visibility of the bridge as traffic comes, coming around the curve, that they can see where the ramp terminates at the bridge, as well as it includes clearing in the gore area to assist drivers to see vehicles that they're going to have to merge with in advance of the merge. The next project is actually an intersection project at Second Avenue and Manchester Expressway, and this project would add several turning lanes on Manchester Expressway and Second Avenue to improve capacity at that intersection. The next project is actually a fairly major project, adding one lane in each direction on JR Allen Parkway, beginning at the Second Avenue interchange and extending all the way to the Bradley Park Drive interchange. And this would include widening the River Road overpass structures. The next several projects are actually at the River Road interchange, and these are actually being planned by the GDOT District III office. The first one being the eastbound ramp terminal intersection, where GDOT plans to add a right-turn lane on the ramp approach, as well as a new traffic signal at that intersection. Then on the other side of the interchange, they plan to signalize that intersection as well and add right-turn lanes in both directions on River Road. The next project is another GDOT project that is well underway, and I'm assuming that you're familiar with that, and that's where-
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I hate to interrupt. Mayor Pro Tem Allen has a question.
Sure.
Wanted to, before you got too deep into this, wanted to touch on a question I had regarding the area from Second Avenue to Bradley Park.
Yes.
You talked about adding a lane.
Yes.
Will that, will you take out the median? Which way will the lane go?
For that particular project, it will actually be constructed in the median.
Okay.
And it would probably require essentially paving the median in between the two directions to accommodate that project.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, sir.
No problem.
Please continue.
So going back to the Bradley Park interchange project, this project actually is in preliminary design. And this will be converting the existing full cloverleaf interchange to a diverging diamond interchange. The next project is close to that, but this is actually would modify the US-80 eastbound off-ramp to Interstate 185. It would actually move the exit approximately one-half mile upstream to the west, where it would actually, you would actually exit to 185 before you crossed over, or before the Bradley Park on-ramp would merge into the main line. And this would be done by constructing the, constructing braided ramps. And this slide shows an example of two braided ramps on Interstate 85 in North Atlanta. You essentially are separating the on and off ramps vertically so that you eliminate the weave condition between those ramps. So this project would actually braid the ramps from going to 185 with the Bradley Park Drive ramps. The next project is in the westbound direction at Whitesville Road. This actually would just be a minor widening of the CD Road to extend the merge area for the traffic coming from 185, the southbound ramp, to give drivers a little bit more distance and time to merge onto the CD Road. Next, we have an auxiliary lane in the westbound direction on the CD Road between Moon Road and 185. This project would help in the traffic coming from Moon Road to get on to the CD Road, as well as the tight loop ramp from Veterans Parkway. It would assist that merge condition, as well as the exit to Interstate 185. Next, we have an intersection project at Veterans Parkway and the westbound US-80 ramps. Currently, this loop ramp, the northbound to westbound movement, is very difficult because of all the lanes that are merging, three lanes that are merging to one lane very quickly. We're recommending actually converting that free-flow right turn to a signalized dual right turn, such that when they have a green right turn phase, then they're not competing with any other traffic that's trying to get on to the loop ramp. And so that they can merge very easily on to that loop ramp. The next location is in, on the US-80 eastbound CD Road between Interstate 185 and Moon Road. Currently, what you, the condition that you have where the CD Road merges down from two lanes to one lane, you have a left-hand merge condition. Basically, the left lane merges into the right lane. And we found from comments that that seems to confuse drivers, because the typical situation on a freeway is the right lane merges into the left, which is actually a much easier merge to perform. And so we're recommending flipping that to a right-hand merge, plus adding a half-mile advance guide sign for the Moon Road exit, to make sure that those drivers know that the Moon Road exit is just ahead. Now, we're going to go to several intersection projects around the Moon Road interchange area. First is the eastbound off-ramp ramp terminal intersection. We're recommending a northbound right turn lane on Moon Road. And then in the westbound ramp intersection, we're recommending widening this off-ramp to include another left turn lane, and then also extending the right turn lane that tends to back up into the left turn lane, extending, giving that lane additional storage. And then lastly, at that same intersection, potentially providing a southbound right turn lane onto the on-ramp. Next, just south of this interchange, we are recommending adding a southbound lane to Moon Road at Whittlesey Boulevard to prevent that intersection from backing up into the interchange. This would actually then, you would still have an exclusive right turn lane, but then you would have two through lanes going south through the Whittlesey Boulevard Going a little further east, we're recommending an auxiliary lane between Moon Road and Schaumburg Road. Both this and the westbound project, which is the next one, these would actually be constructed on the outside of US-80, because essentially, the lane, once it's added at Moon Road, it would drop at Schaumburg. And so at this location, we would have outside widening for this project and the westbound project between Schaumburg and Moon Road. Next, we go to the Schaumburg interchange. Here at the eastbound ramp, we're recommending that that ramp be widened to accommodate an additional left turn lane and then an additional through lane to the Schaumburg-Blackman connector. Then in the westbound ramp, we're proposing to widen the connector to allow a second through lane to the westbound on-ramp in this project. And then the next project is actually a southbound right turn lane on Schaumburg Road. The next two projects go to the Blackman Road interchange. And we're actually recommending multi-lane roundabouts at each of the two ramp terminal intersections, the eastbound intersection as well as the westbound intersection. This is one of our larger projects, and that is actually a third lane in each direction on 80, starting at the Blackman Road interchange and going to the Kitten Lake-Flat Rock intersection. This widening, or this third lane in each direction, would actually be constructed in the median, since it's not an auxiliary lane. It would be constructed in the median of US-80. And it would include widening of the bridges over Warren Springs Road, Fall Line Trace, and the Manchester Expressway. This project is another intersection project that's actually, when we first started this study, it was just a plan. But right now, it's currently under construction at Flat Rock Road and Beaver Run Road, that's being constructed by the Midland Commons developer. And so this, this project is actually the widening of the Flat Rock Road approach to provide dual left turns and the exclusive through and right turn lane. And then the second project is actually the left turn lane that the developers added, the westbound left turn lane at that same intersection. Going a little further east to the Manchester Expressway interchange, this is another District III, GDOT District III project that they're planning to implement. And that's the widening of the southbound off-ramp. That would actually produce a second left turn lane and a shared right and through lane for that approach. Then the opposite approach, Gateway Road, we are actually, this is not part of GDOT's program, but we are recommending a second right turn lane for this approach that's actually dedicated to the traffic that's headed, destined to Manchester Road southbound. So it would be actually separated from the through lanes. And so it would be essentially a free-flow type condition. Then another GDOT project, they're looking at extending the left turn storage lanes over the Manchester Expressway to get the turning vehicles out of the through lanes at that interchange. Then the northbound ramp, there's two projects that we've included, both of which are GDOT D3 projects. One is an exclusive right turn lane widening, the northbound off-ramp, to provide an exclusive right turn lane. And then the other one is widening Beaver Run Road westbound to actually develop a third through lane through that intersection, and maintaining the existing exclusive right turn lane. One more intersection to the east is our problem child, the Flat Rock-Kitten Lake Road intersection. And here, because of limited right of way, what we're proposing is actually just to reconfigure the northbound approach at Flat Rock Road to develop exclusive dual left turn lanes, and then a shared right and through lane, and then an exclusive left turn lane from the shopping center with a shared right and through. What this improvement will allow is it'll allow the left turn lanes to go separate and operate more efficiently than the current operation. Then the next two projects are just to the east of that intersection, and that is continuing the third lane eastbound from that intersection, and then merging back to the two lanes prior to Winfield Way. And then the Converse project is doing the same in the other direction, essentially widening out soon after the Mallard Drive intersection and continuing three lanes through the intersection. This project is actually our only no-cost project, but this was actually resulted in a, one of the comments that we received from the virtual public workshop. And a citizen was very concerned about the safety impacts of the sunshine glare driving on the corridor, either in the afternoon or in, early in the morning, where the sunshine is just right over, the sun is right over the roadway horizon. And there's really very, very little that you can do to avoid that. But what we put in as a potential solution or mitigating project would actually be to use the new changeable message signs to warn motorists of this condition in advance of actually driving on the segment of freeway that that would occur, and advise them to slow down and be aware that that could be a problem. Then this is actually a corridor-wide project. We, one of our scope items was to look at what it would take to upgrade the freeway portion of J.R. Allen Parkway to interstate standards. And for the most part, the design of the parkway follows very closely the interstate standards, except in a few categories, one of which was the paved shoulder width would not meet interstate standards. So we would, you would have to pave most of the corridor or increase the paved shoulder widths of most of the corridor, which would actually encompass also adding, widening some of the bridges on the project. And also, there are three locations that the spacing of the interchange, successive interchanges, do not satisfy the minimum requirements for interstate standards between subsequent ramps. And the only way that you, besides relocating the crossing roads, is actually do what we were proposing at the 185 exit, is create braided ramps to separate those ramps from each other. And so we identified two other locations in addition to the area between the Bradley Park Drive and 185 interchange. And so that's, so essentially, we had, in this program, we had three braided ramp locations in the program, plus the widening for the paved shoulders and the wider bridges. The rest of the projects that I'm going to go through are our multimodal projects. The first one is actually a sidewalk project on Whitesville Road, essentially carrying sidewalks across the J.R. Allen Parkway from the headquarters Nissan to Buckeye Way. A similar project, the second one is similar on Moon Road, extending sidewalk through the interchange from the Columbus Payne Center to Whittlesey Boulevard. The next project is actually a multi-use trail that we are recommending along Schaumburg Road. And this is primarily to provide access to the two schools on the north side of the parkway, to the neighborhoods on the south side of the parkway. And so that multi-use trail, at least initially, would go from North Stadium Drive to Hartwood Drive. Another sidewalk project, and this was actually based on a comment, another comment that we received from the virtual public workshop, is adding a sidewalk on Warren Springs Road. This sidewalk project would begin at Flat Rock Park and go along Warren Springs Road up to Flat Rock Road, and then turn to the right and go down Flat Rock Road to connect to the Fall Line Trace. Another small sidewalk filler project is actually on Flat Rock Road at just south of the Kitten Lake intersection. And it's just filling in some sidewalk in front of the Circle K Service Center. Another sidewalk and tran- Another sidewalk and transit-related project is at North Lake Parkway and Bear Lane. There's a major bus stop on Bear Lane for several of the bus routes. What we're recommending is adding sidewalk to connect that bus stop to the sidewalks on Veterans Parkway, adding some crosswalks, as well as a bus shelter, a new bus shelter and amenities. The next project is actually on Gateway Road, just south of the Parkway. In the area, there are several bus stops in that shopping center area that we're recommending some bus stop amenities, also a new crosswalk to allow riders to cross Gateway safely. And with that crosswalk, we're recommending rectangular rapid flashing beacons so that they can cross Gateway Road more safely. And then there are eight other bus stop locations that are included in the packet of information that you receive that are primarily either small sections of sidewalk, handicap ramps, or bus stop amenities. Project schedule, we are wrapping up the development of our recommendations for preferred improvements, and as soon as we respond to any comments that we receive today, we'll be able to hold our second and last virtual public meeting. At this online meeting, we'll actually show the public the list of our proposed improvements and give them the opportunity to comment on these various improvements. And once we receive their comments, we will respond to those comments and develop our final report. And so currently, right now, we're scheduled to open this virtual public meeting on October 5th, and then we'll go to the 18th, and then respond to comments and prepare the final report by the end of October. With that, I'll open the floor to any questions that...
Thank you, Mr. Strickland. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Did you look at any rerouting or new road construction outward? J.R. Allen makes that right-hand turn to go through Kitten Lake just to get around the whole Kitten Lake area?
To be able to extend J.R. Allen or any facility as a freeway, you're looking at doing it on a new location. You know, basically, almost where the designation of the freeway, fall line trace, where that is, you're really looking at a bypass of the Kitten Lake to be able to continue the facility as a freeway, because of all the land use...
Right. And that was beyond the scope of the study, I assume?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to get at?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? The city manager doesn't appear to be any.
Thank you, sir, for coming. Mr. Mayor, we're going to move on, and I'm going to have our city engineer, Donna Newman, to come and introduce the Steammill Road corridor study.
Thank you. We're here to talk about another corridor study. It's not as, quite as involved as the two previous ones, but it's very much important. As many of you may know, Steammill Road is primarily a community. It's in large part residential. There is an elementary school, as well as a Park Center X Supercenter at the end of the road. And looking back in history, there's a large number, what we would consider a large number of fatalities, that involve both pedestrian and vehicular. And our city manager has actually been on the scene and has seen the dangers along this corridor. So in large part, this was a safety project that we wanted to look at. I have with me today Mitchell Greenway. He is also with StanTech. He and StanTech have been on the city contract and done city projects for approximately 20 years. They're on our on-call contract. And some of the more recent projects that they've been involved in is the River Road Roundabout project that's very near completion, the Moon Road widening project, and also that he's been working on another phase of the Forest Road project, and he actually designed one of the Forest Road bridges. So he's very familiar with Columbus, and he understands Columbus and how important safety is to us. So I'm going to let him come forward and just briefly introduce you to the study. They've done the preliminary investigation groundwork, and the next phase, we'll be putting it out to the public for comment and possibly revision of the scope, and then we'll bring it back to council for a full report.
Thank you, Donna, and good morning, everyone. The projects that Donna mentioned, if you're a fan of those, I did work on those. If not, that was my colleague over here. So let's see if we can back this up. So as Donna mentioned, this project is, it's a little bit different from the two previous presentations you've heard, as this, this one was primarily focused on safety for the corridor versus looking at operational improvements or making it a gateway. So today, what I want to do is walk you through just an overview of the project, give you the objective of the project, go through some of the data we've collected and the analysis, and then wrap it up with a schedule and the next steps for the project. The study evaluates strategies to improve safety and mobility for all users. That includes motorists, bicyclists, and also pedestrians. It begins at Buena Vista Road and runs 2.25 miles east to Pinecrest Drive. It's posted currently at 35 miles per hour with a 25 mile per hour school zone at the Dejean Magnet Academy in the mornings and afternoons. There are no sidewalks currently from Buena Vista Road to the I-185 overpass and from I-185 to Timber Lane Drive, which is near the end of the project. Why is things advancing? At Pinecrest Drive, there is sidewalk on at least one side of the roadway. There's a pedestrian or signalized pedestrian crossing at Cross Creek Apartments near the 185 overpass. There are four key intersections along the corridor, Buena Vista Road, Dogwood Drive, Southern Pines, MacArthur Drive, and North Star Drive. And the corridor sees little over 4,000 vehicles per day on average. And as Donna mentioned, there's been several fatalities on this corridor over the last five years. There are almost 250 crashes with four fatalities, so that was from 2015 to 2019. In talking with the city manager and, and city staff, we understand that there have been some additional fatalities since this data was collected. So that was, I guess, important to note here is that that equates to about 20 accidents per mile per year, which is probably about double what we would see on a facility of this type. The primary goal of the study is to develop solutions to reduce the number of these crashes and the severity of the crashes, and as I mentioned, also provide safer mobility options for all users. And the study team, so far, we've, we've collected traffic counts. We did this pre-COVID, so we know we have some good numbers to look at forecasting. And we've completed several studies, including traffic analysis and a road safety audit. Operational problems that we've discovered are limited at isolated intersections, but there are safety issues along the entire corridor to note. And there's, with a high volume of severe crashes, as you can see from this chart, if it'll stay there, there are almost 30% of the crashes along Steammill Road resulting in injury or fatality. That's extremely high. So the crashes are, while safety issues are along the corridor, crashes are concentrated mostly at intersections with higher volumes of vehicles. Obviously, Buena Vista Road, Dogwood Drive, Southern Pines Drive, and Inglewood Drive. And of the nearly 250 crashes, 42% of these are angle crashes, 26% rear ends, and 20% are crashes that are not with a motor vehicle. What that means is typically with, those would be crashes with mailboxes, utility poles, roadway embankments, or unfortunately, in the case of Steammill Road, crashes with a pedestrian. So to dive a little deeper into what is actually contributing to so many crashes, we did a speed study and the aforementioned road safety audit. This is the, represents the speed study. This is the westbound direction. Eastbound was very similar. The horizontal line that's on the graph is the 35 mile per hour posted speed. As you can see, the speeds are 10 to 15 miles frequently above that posted speed, and those excessive speeds are definitely a contributing factor to the severity of the crashes. And it's important to note that when a pedestrian is struck at speeds over 40 miles per hour, there's an 80% chance of a fatality. So that was statistical, speed study, statistical, statistics-driven. Road safety audit is more observational, so we actually went out in person, walked this site, and had some interaction with city staff. And what we discovered, there was immediately, was there were some deficiencies in striping. It was either largely deteriorated or missing, and that's a really inexpensive fix that has a great improvement on safety. There are sight distance issues along the corridor as well. Some of these are due to roadway geometry, where you have curves, steep vertical curves like the photo on the right. There's also some overgrown vegetation that's obstructing sightlines at intersections, and then there are places where we have landscaping that's been placed in right-of-way that's also creating some obstructions. And then looking at pedestrian safety, similar to the Second Avenue project you heard, there's some deteriorated sidewalks, some problems with the sidewalks there, damaged sections, segments along the corridor that don't have sidewalks, issues with ramps not aligning with crosswalks. And then probably the worst situation is there's some, some places where sidewalk is adjacent to the roadway, the travel lanes, without any curbing, curbing gutter, or physical barriers to separate vehicles from pedestrians. And then some miscellaneous things that we noticed is there's some insufficient lighting along the corridor. There is lighting, but it's often obscured by vegetation, so it renders it really ineffective. And you have drainage issues where there's some ponding in the roadway, and of course, the photo on the left, there's some vehicles parking along the shoulder of the road on the sidewalk. And some of these, it forces pedestrians to either have to walk on the private property or walk out into traffic. So any of these issues mentioned, when you have them by themselves individually, they are, they could be serious safety concerns, but when you have them together, concentrated in one location, it really compounds that, that issue. So as we, as we brainstorm the solutions to these challenges, we want to make sure that, that we are considering how the operational improvements can affect the safety and efficiency of this corridor. So with that, we, we did some capacity analysis and traffic analysis at 10 intersections that you see on the map here. And we, with that, we focused on the intersections with higher traffic volumes and where the crash totals were also higher. And what we found out in the, currently, as it stands with current traffic volumes, the corridor is functioning very efficiently operational-wise. This represents level of service for 2020. The green is great. It's measured from an A to F, and almost all the intersections are As right now. The yellow is acceptable by industry standards, but currently is functioning well as far as moving cars. But as we project traffic out in 20 years, 2040, have a couple of intersections that are really going to deteriorate. The red is an F, which is worse, the worst case for us. That's the MacArthur-Southern Pines intersection, so if we, if we don't make improvements there, that intersection will fail in future years. So as we look at, look at the improvement, safety improvements, we have an opportunity to also address these future operational problems by implementing the safer mobility So this is our schedule. We're, we're lagging the other two projects a little bit, a couple of months, and that was intentional. We didn't want to overwhelm the public with, with public meetings and trying to get, you know, good feedback from the public. We are, we're currently in the alternatives evaluation phase of the project, and in November, we're, we're planning to have a design, virtual design workshop to receive input, input from the public. And that workshop will be conducted via our website, steammillroadstudy.com. That's where the public can go and learn more about the project, and through an interactive map, help us identify problem areas and some potential solutions, and then complete a, an online survey. For those people who are not familiar, are not comfortable navigating the website, we will be mailing out approximately 500 survey letters to, to citizens, residents along, or in the Steammill Road area, and with self-addressed stamped envelopes to return to the engineering staff so that we can track that as well. And then once we finish the design workshop, we'll develop a list of improvement opportunities, improvement options, evaluate the effectiveness of those to narrow that down to some preferred options, and then go back out to the public with another virtual meeting in January. And that would, as soon as we get the feedback from that meeting, we would, I guess, compile our comments and conclude the study with the recommendations.
All right. Mr. Greenway, thank you. That's, city manager and I have talked about that road a lot, and we desperately need to address some of those intersections, some of those issues. Been way too many crashes over there. Counselor Tucker? Hang on. There we go.
I'm the counselor for that district. I have a question about the 500 individuals that you're sending mailers to. Is it possible to get the list, like the individuals, that way we can personally, you know, contact them?
Absolutely. The, the way the list was generated, just a, just an FYI, we worked with, with David Cooper and Director Jones in the planning office. We went, I believe it was 500 feet outside each direction of the corridor and did a swath along the corridor is how we came up with those addresses. They came directly out of the GIS data, database here in the city, but we can, yes, we can provide that data.
All right. Very good. Any other questions? Doesn't appear to be any.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, the final item on the work session agenda today is a budget review session. And Mayor, I would recommend that we maybe take a 10-minute reset... And Mayor, I would recommend that we maybe take a 10-minute recess, it's 11:10, and reconvene at 11:20 so that we can get in position for this next session.
I think, I think that's appropriate. We'll follow the same process that we followed in, during budget session, and we'll go ahead and, and we will adjourn this meeting and reconvene with Counselor House as the vice budget, vice chair of the Budget Committee, and just, as you said, give a 10-minute break. So, if there's no other comments for the city manager, or city attorney, or anybody else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the work session. All right? There's a motion from, I think it came from Counselor Garrett, and a second from Counselor Tucker. So, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye. All right? We are adjourned, and we'll reconvene in 10 minutes.